The shortfall at this point, we were to be not winning jobs.
We were over three hundred and fifty jobs.
Al's waking up.
We all have our red, white, and blue on today a little bit.
A little bit. How was the UCLA? Go well?
Yeah, real well. He had a great.
Did he?
Great day.
That's great.
He made some great catches.
How awesome is it down there?
Oh, it's beautiful. If you wouldn't know, there's any kind of financial problems down at school, they're built like crazy. Residential facilities, while we were there, they took up the grass and they're gonna put in an artificial turf for what they're doing.
Does he want to go to UCLA or what's?
UCLA had this seven-on-seven passing league.
Okay.
And there were sixteen schools there. Dinuba came in third.
Wow.
These were big schools. And one of the teams that was in the finals, they were in the semifinals, they got beat by the team that only won the overall thing. And the team that they played in the semifinals, Dinuba had beaten them. So anyways, they came in second.
Wow.
But, I mean, they surprised a lot of people.
That's cool.
Who's Dinuba? I mean, mostly for big Southern California schools.
That's really cool.
That's cool.
That's great. Yeah, that's really exciting.
They get some press off of that. That'd be, that's pretty cool.
Morning and welcome to the June twenty-eighth Board of Supervisors meeting. It's great to see such a group of smiling faces out there today, and all are welcome. Please join me, stand in the flag salutes, followed by a moment of silence, please.
I congratulate you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the objects for which you stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Okay, item number one on our agenda this morning is honoring Al Guzman, purchasing agent, who has dedicated his public service to Tulare County. Rita.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members, Jean, CAO, and Theresa. Al doesn't work for me, he works for the board, but we have a very close relationship between our offices. His staff, however, works for me. It's kind of strange, but it works really good. And so this morning, I was asked to introduce Al. So come on up. I will miss him very much, and I hope he comes back extra help, more than just a little bit. However, the new purchasing agent, or the interim purchasing agent, I'm sure will do a good job because he has the procedures and things that Al has set in place. This man can even sell a blind horse, and has. He has made the county a lot of money through the surplus store, and through the ways that he has implemented the agreements and the RFP procedures he handles, and the purchasing procedures that he has handled and changed. He's been active in his organization with the other purchasing agents around, and organized them through the many years that he's been here, and helped other counties, helped the other agencies in the area through the rebate program through Office Depot, get thousands of dollars they would not have gotten. Helped the county get thousands and millions of dollars they would not have gotten. So, he has been a valued employee for the county, and he deserves recognition. Tomorrow, we are having a reception at the Veterans Hall between two and four, and everyone's welcome to honor Al. He doesn't want things said about him too much. He's kind of shy, really.
He's gonna get some things said.
But he needs something said about him, because he deserves it. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of things here for you, Al. Al, come on in. First of all, I've got this proclamation honoring Al on your dedication and service. I read through this, and there's a lot of stuff on here. In his career as public service, he was buyer for Visea Unified School District in nineteen seventy-four, and to Tulare County as a supervising buyer in nineteen eighty-five. He returned to Visea Unified School District as Director of Purchasing in nineteen ninety-seven, but returned to Tulare County as purchasing agent in nineteen ninety-eight. He also served the United States Navy and the National Guard for twenty-six years, and is certified purchasing manager, certified professional public buyer, and is an accredited purchasing practitioner. He's an active member of the California Association of Public Purchasing Officers. I was also actively involved in several community groups, including Sequoia Coannis, United Way Board of Directors, Chair for the Central Valley Purchasing Association. He received a special achievement in County Service Award from the Tulare County Board of Supervisors in two thousand and six, and received the Department Employee of the Year in two thousand and seven, along with numerous shining star awards. So whereas in retirement, Al will be able to enjoy his many hobbies, which include golf, fixing up his nineteen sixty-four Chevy stepside pickup, I remember when those were new, helping needy families, Coannis, United Way, finishing his wife's memorial garden, and spending time with family, friends, three dogs, one cat, two fish, and a horse. He's got a horse. It's not blind, though, right?
No, it's not blind.
Okay, great. So on behalf of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worley, and Mike Ennis, we would like to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Also, we're gonna present Al with what's supposed to be, and is, the highest honor you can receive, the big county seal on a plaque, and it says, "Presented Al Guzman, purchasing agent, an appreciation of your thirteen years of service and dedication to the community Tulare County, June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven." Thank you, Al.
First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing me to work for you. I enjoyed every moment of it. I don't know how to say this, but this board has been fantastic. Other boards, I know from other counties working with them, their board just doesn't see procurement as an area of concern. This county allowed us to think. My staff, we're a small group, we've only increased one employee the whole time I've been here twenty-six years. We increased one employee, but we have increased also the services that we provided for the county, and that's because we were able to sit down together and think things through, and work together as a group. And with the support of the board, none of this would have happened. I think the surplus store, we were just talking about it the other day, in the last, I think, five or six years, we've been able to actually pay for our department through the surplus. We were able to actually make more than what our department cost to run. And so, we wouldn't have been able to do that without the board and their support. And I thank you very much for allowing me to work for you.
Well, thank you, Al, for a wonderful job. Appreciate it.
I would like to say a few words.
Well, Al, I just will be very short and sweet, and I know some other board members will steal my thunder again, but thank you for serving Tulare County and our community for longer than I've even been alive. It's been wonderful to know that you've been so dedicated, and I really have enjoyed working with you, and I thank you for all your commitment, not only to Tulare County, but to other public entities in this community, and making this community a better place. I thank you for serving the country. I think that's a very high honor, and that's something to be real proud of, and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement, and I hope that the best years of your life are ahead of you.
We're gonna go this way, okay. Al, I'm sure if you look hard enough, you can probably find a coffee mug to fit that coaster somewhere in the surplus store. If you've not had the opportunity to go down to the surplus store Friday mornings, and I gotta tell you, your staff, they clean up really nice here today, got ties on and stuff. But if you've not had a chance to go to the surplus store, it's like going to El Buufadora in Mexico, where you go into the meat, and you start dickering and bargaining, you find something you like, and you pull it out, but you don't want to let them know that you're interested too much, or they're gonna, they're gonna probably double the price on you. But I tell you what, that, just that alone, you're leaving a legacy behind, Al, that is, you know, something to be very proud of. You've created a wonderful team. I enjoy stopping by there almost every Friday just to talk with the people that you work with, because they're so friendly, kind, helpful. You've done a good job in training folks to come up behind you, very, you know, very, I would say, public-oriented. Just, they like the people, they work well with the people, and I think they have followed your leading example there. So congratulations on your retirement, wish you well for many years to come, and I know this isn't the last we're gonna see of you, and I don't think you're shy at all.
Mr. Chairman, Al, it's going to, it is obviously a bittersweet moment, I'm sure, for you, and it is for us, to see your departure. We wish you well on your retirement. I guess I've known you longer than anyone else on this dais, and I remember when the late Jim Maples left the county, one of the things that we gave him as a joke, and I think probably you're responsible for it, was Al's Mart gift certificate. I don't know if you ever had a chance to redeem that or not, but one thing I wanted to say, Al, was that, you know, you exemplify what makes Tulare County succeed, and that is ingenuity, a great work ethic, and a willingness to try new things, and not be afraid to take risks. And it's really been noticed and appreciated by the board. And finally, I wanted to say that one of the things that kind of goes, maybe people aren't aware of about Al, but although the Friday store has raised this considerable amount of revenue for the county, he gives away an awful lot of things, especially to the school districts, for indigent children and so forth. We give away computers, and I know that's done in conjunction with other organizations that contribute to that, but Al is extremely liberal and generous when it comes to using this opportunity to provide valuable goods to districts that are struggling financially, and so that's kind of an unstated aspect of your business plan, Al, that doesn't go unnoticed by a lot of school districts. And so I just want to thank you personally. I consider you a great person and a great friend, and I, again, hope you have a great, great retirement.
I don't think a lot of people really understand the job that Al's been doing for these many years, and there's a very serious side to his job, and that's procurement. And that is going through the RFP process, and many of you in this room have gone through an RFP or reviewed them, and you know, they're not simple to sort through and determine who you're gonna give contracts to. So besides the Al Mart, there's a big part of the job that's very technical, and we've been very fortunate to have you in command during the time you've been here. And usually, when you see purchasing department, a lot of times you see a lot of conflict that comes up with the Board of Directors, or the County Boards, the City Boards. We don't have those conflicts since you've been at the helm, and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate your dedication. The other thing I would like to follow up on is what Supervisor Worley brought up, was innovation. I think this county, this Board of Supervisors, your supervisors that are in the field, if you have an idea, and it sounds positive and probable, we're willing to go down that road to see the results. And the market has been a tremendous success, and that's why other counties bring their things here, because they're not willing to go down that same road. So, thank you very much for all your service, and thank you for your integrity.
Well, Al, let me say thank you, and you know I used to razz you about the cars, you know, because I was thirty-four years in the car business, and I'd say, "Al, hey, need to get those leakers off the front line. Need to shuffle those things." I know, they would get them baby shuffled, get them things around. Those with the bad paint, get them in the back. But anyway, Al, you've done a great job, and I'll tell you something, if I was still in the car business, you'd be on my sales team, I'll tell you what's new. Okay? But thank you, Al. Thank you so much for all your dedication to this county. We do appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to item number two, a presentation regarding the Tulare County Speakers Bureau and Citizens Request Form. These are two things that I initiated in my county speech, and hopefully they're moving forward, and Jed Cherebiath will bring us up to speak.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the Board of Supervisors. Jed Cherebiath, I'm a board staffer, as well as the county media officer. Today, I want to talk about or present the Tulare County Citizens Request Form and Speakers Bureau. As Supervisor or Chairman Ennis mentioned earlier, in his two thousand and eleven State of the County speech, he had various topics that he addressed, and two emerging themes were brought forward. One is the need for customer service, and the second was increased communication with outreach and more access to the public. The first initiative I wanted to talk about is the online citizen request form. This request form is actually modeled after what the city of Tulare is currently using. It provides county residents another way to communicate with county departments about an issue that needs to be resolved. The online request form is available on the Board of Supervisors page, and will be prominently located on the main page this week. After clicking the link, the constituent will be taken to a page with a form to enter their contact information, department with which they need assistance, and a description of the problem. When the constituent hits submit, their correspondence will go to the appropriate county staff. The idea behind having a tool online really is, many times, there are constituents who will place calls to the county, and unfortunately, they contact the wrong, the wrong department, and that does create a little bit of inefficiency with staff time. So we hope by having this tool, it will be a tool to increase efficiency. The second, the second item I'd like to talk about is the Tulare County Speakers Bureau. Supervisor, this is another tool that Supervisor Ennis wanted to implement, and I think we're ready to launch. Some research was done for a month, and we took a look at several different Speakers Bureaus that's being done in other counties, as well as the Speakers Bureau that was implemented in the nineties by Rhonda Sostrom. Earlier on in the year, Chairman Ennis submitted letters to each department asking that they submit topics that their staff can address. More than two hundred topics were received, and we do have a website set up. This is a tool that is available to civic clubs, chambers, schools, and other interested residents. We currently have the Speakers Bureau set up on www.AroundTulareCounty.com, and I'll just go ahead and show you briefly what it looks like, or what both look like. The first, online citizens request form, a constituent can either submit their concern anonymously, or provide their contact name, and the issue that they need resolving. Also, the Speakers Bureau is located on AroundTulareCounty.com. Constituents can click on Speakers Bureau, and they'll be taken to the page, and it gives some rules and guidelines in getting a speaker from the county. They hit submit, and the email comes to board staff, and then we work with the departments to get a speaker out to the presentation. I'd like to announce that the Tulare County Speakers Bureau is already being used. The California Association of Pest Control Advisors requested a presentation from the Tulare County Ag Commissioner regarding pesticide use enforcement. Our Ag Commissioner will be speaking to a group of two hundred on August eighteenth. So if you have any questions, that will conclude my presentation.
Supervisor Worley?
Jed, one thought that came to my mind, in the form that we have on the, online, you were saying that some people don't know to whom to submit their requests. Is there anything that gives them some kind of basic background about, you know, if I have a question about roads, you know, who do I contact, and RMA department, and those kinds of things? So there's some kind of general information, because I think there still would be the problem, if I've got a problem, but I don't know necessarily where to go, is there something that would help them? And another thing that came to my mind, that you frequently see on these situations, are frequently asked questions, you know, so if, you know, there's probably ten questions that will get asked a hundred times before another one does, maybe listing some of those questions, and areas of concern, that people will know where to go.
Yes, the online request form does include a drop-down menu of the various departments that the county has, so that should be a good first step for that constituent. There's also a tab that says other, just in case they're not sure which department to contact. And in terms of frequently asked questions, as we get, as the requests come in, and there are a few or several issue, common themes, we can set up a frequently asked questions page for the constituent.
Good. Thank you, and I think it's, I appreciate your work on this. I think it's really helpful, will be helpful to our staff throughout the county, because obviously, interaction with the public is one of the most important things that we do, and this is a great tool, I think, to facilitate that.
And I think it's just great to get the word out to all of our communities on what the county really does, and what all of our departments do. So it's very, very important to get that transparency out, transparency out there, so that maybe improve our image. You know, sometimes our image hasn't been that good in the past, and I think that any time we can get out, and of course, I've been involved in Rotary for thirty-three years, and one of the main problems when you're in a club like that is trying to find a program. So if you can go to the county, and you've got all these different resources to use, it's gonna be, not only improve the image of the county, but help our different communities get programs into their communities, and tell them what we really do at the county. So do appreciate all your hard work, and all the department heads, and everybody that's worked on this. I appreciate all your help and your hard work, too.
I just also like to give a special thanks to the IT department for working with us to set up both of the pages.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think this is the item that everybody's here for today. So we're gonna recognize the Tulare County employees who have been selected for their respective departments to be honored in the employee recognition program. So as I announce the department, would the nominees please stand? From the Ag Commissioner and Sealer. Thank you. And remain standing, if you would. From the Assessor Clerk Recorder. Keep standing. From the Auditor Controller, Elections Purchasing Treasurer, and Tax Collector. Capital Projects and Facilities. Child Support Services. Cooperative Extension. County Council. The Fire Department. District Attorney. General Services. Health and Human Services Agency. You'd have the room stood up. Human Resource and Development. Library. Probation. Resource Management Agency. Sheriff's Department. Tulare County Association of Governments. And Workforce Investment Board. Hey, let's give all these nominees a round of applause. Please be seated. Okay, at this time, I will announce the Employee of the Year. The Employee of the Year has an excellent attendance record. This person always takes on duties in addition to their own normal jobs. This person has been an employee with the county for ten years. Employee of the Year took the lead with HIS staff, and developed additional training for the staff in HIS department. This person made a change in operations that saved the county over forty thousand dollars per year. I'm proud to announce the two thousand and ten Employee of the Year is from Capital Projects and Facilities, Mike Dickerson. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Assistant County Administrative Officer Kristen Bennett to say a few words.
Good morning. It's my honor and privilege to share a description of Mike Dickerson's dedication and contributions. Mike began his career with Tulare County in December nineteen ninety-eight as a Maintenance Worker One. After a short stint with a private company, he returned to the county in December two thousand and two as an Electrician One. Mike was promoted to a Building Systems Technician in two thousand and six, and within three months was promoted to Maintenance Supervisor. In May of this year, Mike was promoted to his current position of Facility Specialist. In February two thousand and ten, as part of the Resource Management Agency reorganization, Building Maintenance was transferred to the County Administrative Office, Capital Projects, and was established as the Facilities Division. As Maintenance Supervisor, Mike was instrumental in assisting to stabilize the workforce, create the division's identity, and improve work performance. He has worked diligently to implement our motto of "Share Our Pride" within the division and throughout the county. Mike's innovation and leadership during the transition have been invaluable. Shortly after the transfer, Mike identified an operational practice that required facility maintenance supervisors to deliver time cards and documents from their work sites to the Government Plaza daily. His analysis and recommendation to utilize the courier service for this activity resulted in an annual savings of over forty-four thousand dollars, and more importantly, over fifteen hundred hours of time, equal to nearly one time, a full-time position, was returned to supervision rather than driving in circles. Mike continues to contribute positive recommendations and identify areas for improvement. His most recent contribution was the development of a comprehensive training program for new and existing facility staff. Mike has worked with staff to develop the training aids and manuals for electrical, plumbing, pneumatic, and door lock systems. These training sessions are now underway. The potential benefits from this training program are enormous and will have a positive impact on county facilities for years to come. Mike's work habits, personal traits, and characteristics truly exemplify Tulare County's Employee of the Year for 2010. As Employee of the Year, Mike will receive an additional week of vacation. And while Mike is coming up, I'd like to welcome his wife, who is also surprised to him here today, Danielle, and we add our congratulations.
Well, I'd like to thank the board and I'd like to thank Tulare County because Tulare County's provided me an opportunity to grow and to hone my skills and to give back to the community. So I'd like to thank you and I'd like to thank everybody in the audience. Thank you.
I'd like to say a few words. Congratulations, Mike. It's an honor, well deserved. If you look around the room, how many people have been recognized today? And the people who've been recognized today are the cream of Tulare County. Their leadership's been recognized, their dedication to the county. And it's, it's one of those times of the year that I think the board is, is, well, it's a pleasure to have this item come before us to recognize the best in Tulare County. So thank all of you for your service and dedication.
I think, Mike, as we mentioned a moment ago, for recognizing Al Guzman, that, that one of the things that's so very important as we go forward is something that you've exemplified and demonstrated, and, and that is initiative, looking at situations with different eyes, seeing that the way we've always done things is not always the best way to do things, looking for ways to streamline, expedite, increase our efficiencies. These are things that we have to do going forward in every department because we know that funding is always going to be an issue. And the, the way that we can really give back to our employees is to increase efficiencies. You know, as we look forward, I, I look back, I think in Tulare County, when I came to the, on the board, we had about 4,800 employees. That was, that was over, that was 12 years ago, 12 and a half years ago. Today, we're down to around 4,000 employees. Some of that's because, of course, of state funding reductions, that's a lot of it. But even without that, when you look at the increase of the population in our county, we have not grown county staff. Well, how can we do that? Because we have improved our efficiencies and we have to continue to improve our efficiencies. In so doing, then, we have the funds that we can restore, you know, raises and pay, and pay our people appropriately, and we do that by efficiencies. And I, I just thank you for, you know, demonstrating that. And I think in my mind, that was one of the things that stuck out in your resume was taking initiative. And I really hope that that's something that everybody will pick up on in our, in our county because that's how we're going to make things better. We have no idea what you do out there. You know what you do out there and it's from you that we get the good ideas. So thank you very much.
My comment's going to be a little bit selfish, I think, because every, every time I, you know, I see something like this happen and over the, the decades that I've watched people get the man and woman of the year, this award or that award, I'm always thinking, you know, where's the guy that knows how, what a black and a red and a white wire are? You know? And I appreciate it when I see someone who can look in a box full of black, red, and white wires and they know where they go and what they ought to be and, and what, what they do.
It's just white to white and black to black and red to red. Come on.
You're going to make me tell a story. I, I sent one of my best electricians years ago to a job out in Yedam, wherever that is. And the customer called me the next day complaining that their, their breaker was tripping every time they turn on their new evaporative cooler. And I said, well, I sent out one of my best guys, you know, it's got to be something simple. And it was, the black was connected to the white. So my, I, you know, I appreciate the hard work you do and looked at the manuals, looked and excited about the training that you provide also because we do have a lot of new folks coming up that do need to know what that black and white and red wire mean and, and all these locks you got to work with. You know, Brian mentioned the locks, it's amazing. We have some very complicated door locks in this county that, that have driven our staff crazy for years. And it's good to know that, you know, you've, you've broken that down a little bit, maybe to an A, B, C, this is how we ought to fix it. So congratulations and I hope the extra week is a good thing to be at home. Is it a good thing? Okay, it's a good thing.
Honeydew list.
So congratulations.
Mike, I just want to reiterate what my fellow board members have said. Congratulations to you. Today is your day and thank you for all your hard work in 2010. I also want to thank all of the employees who are here today. You have been recognized by the managers and department heads within your department. They recognize you for the outstanding work that you put forward. And I know these are very difficult times, but it was really great to see your level of dedication to the county and to the public, doing what you do. Obviously, we, we wish it could be for, for more money, but right now it's just for the love of the job and for, for doing what's right for the people that you serve. And I really appreciate that. I think this whole board does. And with that, I would like to stand and give you, the employees, a standing ovation right now. Thank you for all your dedication.
We do appreciate it, appreciate your hard work. And we appreciate everybody out there. We appreciate everybody's hard work. You're all winners in our book. We only have, we can only choose one, but as far as in our book, you're all winners. So thank you so much for what you do on a daily basis for Tulare County. You are part of this big family. Thank you. At this time, I think we'll take about a five minute break and then we'll resume after that. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. We'll move to item number four, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on matters concerning the board but not on the agenda may do so at this time? Either one, this is one, this will be fine right here. Give us your name and address and...
My name is Jose Duarte. I, my address is 32963, Road 156, Ivanhoe, California. Small town that everybody's neglected. And I think in front of you by now, you should have a memo for me. Okay, that gives you a bird's, a bird's eye view of Ivanhoe, okay? And all the problems that we have. You know, and, and the biggest problem is, is the last bullet. Gangs, alcoholism, street drugs, street drugs, and the highest teenage pregnancy rate in the state. Awful, awful record. And we're supporting the item number 12 on your agenda to adopt the contract to get that building going and hopefully get a community center operation by, you know, by September when the kids go back to school or August. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see something there. And we thank you in, for your support and hopefully we'll see something good come out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Sunderland, would you like to bring us up to speed on the fire that's out in the Fountain Springs area?
Good morning, Board. Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Department. I just spoke with Chief Swartzlander from Cal Fire. They're going to call their fire down in the east of the Dukor area, about 2,000 acres. Of course, they won't have a final acreage until they actually get it mapped. It's 45% contained. It's in grazing land, lots of grass, some scattered oaks. Our commitment there at one point was water tender, an engine patrol, and a chief officer. We're down to a water tender and a logistics staff support person. And I would expect that those resources will be released sometime this afternoon, early evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to approach the board?
Good Lord has left me on this earth a little bit longer than I planned, I think, sometimes. And the devil, he's afraid I'll take over. My name is Mal Zeman. My wife Carol and I live at 6306 West Hurley Avenue between Acres and Shirk. I've been there, been in Visalia since 74 and there since 86. I'm here to, for both of us, who both of us object using road tax for the railroad, okay? No deference to Alan. Mr. Ashita, our friends from Lodi, farmed 800 acres north Santa, Arkansas in World War II. They lost their parents there. And when they got back, all they had was 400 acres. Needless to say, Board, we don't want our road tax going for the railroad. Now, this is America. If you believe in that railroad, please invest 50 to 75,000 dollars in it of your own money and buy shares. Mr. Ashita's got people, I'm sure that he can convince to buy shares. Otherwise, November 12th, November in 12th is going to look a lot different. And there are going to be some whole big changes. I just say, with the 10 people that are on the board that support you for this, on that commission, that can put in money, I think in three years, it'd be more than enough money, that maybe with a little bit of help from the governments you've been trying to get to. You could have that railroad, but I suggest you leave your shares to your heirs because the profit's going to be a while. That's, that's all I have because it, we've, we set out with this road tax for roads. Yes, Mr. Ashita, you may be right, that road may make a profit. But in my lifetime, no. And, and I don't, you know, I'll buy a donut hole if it makes it in your lifetime. But you have friends there. You have people that are going to use that. That's the reason why you're pushing it. It's America. Go ahead, but stand up and put your own money in it and buy shares in it. And everybody else here that believes in that, get the 10 people on that commission because some of them I don't agree with. And believe me, I talked to a lot of people yesterday. The airport manager, I had a good idea and he's going to grab it and run. Visalia consul, arborist with these oak trees, we're going to lose somebody in the city one of these days on these oak trees. And my, where I'm living now, used to be nine oaks and all I've got left is eight. But I've got one this high growing out of us, one of the 35 cedar trees. I'm sure I'm up, okay? But really, think about that. Think about that because November 12th, three of you are going to be, try to be reelected probably, or there will be three positions open. There could be a big change.
Thank you.
I am going to leave because I have to get home and go to work, I guess, as little as I do. She does all the yard work, I do all the cooking.
Please don't leave quite yet.
Anyone else wishing to approach the board?
Chairman Ennis, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Tom Johnson. I live at 204 North Fairway Street here in Visalia. I'm here to support the Ivanhoe issue on the board agenda. Chris Ritchie and I chaired the co, the fundraising campaign in order to raise funds for the Ivanhoe Boys and Girls Club Center. And we fell short of our budget. We were hoping to retain more of our dollars for the operations of the center for the next two years. But the board did approve the transfer of 50,000 from our operations budget in order to help make this program go forward. I appreciate the comments that Jose made earlier with regard to the need for this center in Ivanhoe. And we also appreciate Supervisor Cox for your continued volunteer work at the Boys and Girls Club on Saturday nights and whatnot. But you've been very supportive of this project, but it's really time to get it going. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to approach? Okay, close the public comment. Okay, let's move on to Board of Supervisor Matters. Supervisor Ashita?
Well, I want to start off on a subject I wasn't really going to address this morning, but since under public comment, I want to make something very clear to the public. Major R money, that road tax was not all for roads. 14% was set aside for air quality mitigation. And in the plan, it stated specifically one project, which was a right of way project. It is the trail between Tulare and Visalia, a pedestrian trail. That is an old railroad right of way. Tulare County nor TCAG are negotiating to buy any rail at this present time. We're only negotiating to buy the right of way that has been abandoned, there is no rail on it, from Strathmore to Jovista. And we have a lot of interest from the city of Porterville that's on, in the middle of Porterville is that right of way, to put the same type of pedestrian path in that the city of Visalia and Tulare is trying to accomplish right now. And we can accomplish that at a minimal cost versus going back and trying to re-buy right of way. And the other issue is that if you lose that right of way and someone builds on that right of way, there will not be a pedestrian path. And that is the immediate use of what we're negotiating on right now. There is no rail involved. They won't run a train on that right of way, probably in my lifetime. But the right of way is what we're looking to preserve. And that was specifically spelled out in Major R. So it is not road money. You can't use that money for a road. So I, I don't know how many times I have said this to the press, on radio, that we are not buying a railroad. We're now currently buying and trying to preserve a right of way. And that goes under the 14% expenditure plan of Major R. So I hope that clears up some of the information you may be getting from the newspaper because the newspaper is not correct. It's a different matter. I'd like to talk directly about staff on, I had a meeting the other day with a bunch of farmers out in my district. And we've had a drain problem out there from a plugged underground drainage system that was put in in the 60s. And we've had a continual problem of water subbing up, killing crops, and damaging our roads. And think, I'd like to thank Britt Fussell publicly today for finally looking into the background of this drain and finding out who may be responsible for the maintenance of this drain. And this issue's been going on for 15 years and finally, I think we have, may have some direction on where we go with this. So I certainly want to thank you, Britt, for the research that you did. Last week, I attended a meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Policy Committee and the subject came up, which somewhat contentious is the blueprint. There are people that are trying to maneuver the County Association of Governments or the County Organization of Governments into expanding their powers to giving them land use powers. And our COG, or TCAG, has voted over a year ago stating, we would not participate in losing land use authorities for the cities and the county to be put into a pot of eight counties and forming another group of government, another government agency to oversee the needs of our counties. The reason this comes up is that our northern counties of the eight, San Joaquin and Stanislas, they have a tremendous amount of commuter residents who commute to the Bay Area every day. So they, their, their needs are different than the southern counties where, you know, we may travel within our different counties, but we don't go out of the valley. So we want to make sure that that element does not get put into any blueprint plan to where someone can infer that we're, we are in favor of an eight county land use commission. So I think we stopped it last week. Last week, I also met with the BNSF railroad, and this is for your interest, is that the BNSF railroad, see, they have a vested interest in the Central Valley and would like to expand their presence. So we will be meeting with their industrial people in the near future as well as Union Pacific's industrial people to see if there are locations within our, in Tulare County that they would like to see. would like to see an industrial development that is served by rail. If they don't have any intentions of serving us by rail in Tulare County, we're going to move on to other issues. So I think there are very important meetings coming up. Now, when you talk about industrial park that's served by rail, you're looking at least at a minimum of a thousand acres. So most likely, it'd be a two-thousand-acre park. And there are very few places left in the state of California outside the Central Valley that has the land that can accommodate that size of industrial development. And one thing that they took notice of is that thirty percent of our population is under the age of eighteen. If you look at the metropolitan areas, their workforce is aging. They're closing schools in the major metropolitan areas, because they don't have kids anymore who are going to school. So the San Joaquin Valley does present some opportunities for those companies and other major companies to move into the valley. So with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had an advisory council meeting of the upper Kings River organization, which we belong to. And we did not have a quorum. Apparently, that's a continuing problem when they have these sort of standalone advisory board meetings. But we had quite a conversation about the differences between full membership, as we have, and then associate members, such organizations that are associated with that organization. And related to the use of a particular computer modeling program, right now, it's limited, the use of that computer modeling program is limited to the full membership. And the question was, would the associate memberships be allowed to use it if they were to pay for the cost of operating it? And I just wanted to let you know that I was there supporting that proposition. It was raised by, you know, local folks in Tulare County who wanted to be able to access that information, and so I was there trying to support that position. They will be going to the full board for action in the near future. Other than that, I really want to wish everyone that's here and the rest of the board members a great Fourth of July weekend coming up, and hope everybody's safe and has a great time as we honor our nation and the anniversary of our independence.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox?
Two things. The information provided by Mr. Duarte's, we received this week in a letter from Bob McKellar in regards to Ivanhoe. And I wanted to fill the rest of the board, as well the public, in on an issue we have that was addressed in the letter. The first five commission over the last, you know, eight or nine years has provided funding for the school readiness program. And we, you know, currently fund between thirteen and sixteen schools, mostly in unincorporated areas in Tulare County. The first five organization act as the pass-through agency for the state, that when the state cut that funding, we had to go out to the schools and cut those programs. That was a very difficult, you know, thing to do, but we were acting as a pass-through agency. Although we did go to those schools and provide them the opportunity to run one more year, we would provide each of them forty-five thousand dollars of our reserve money from the first five commission to keep the school readiness programs going one more year in those communities. So all of them took us up on it. Their match was five thousand dollars in cash, although they do need to reduce the size of their programs considerably from what they were funded in the past. Those will be reduced. So if you do receive a call about your preschool programs at the schools, know that, you know, that was in large part due to cuts by the state funding. Second thing, when I miss something and I'm wrong, I'll admit it. Last week, the staff had inserted language into the agenda item in regards to impact fees that I missed. Even though they put it in bold, I don't think capital letters, but it was in bold letters, I did miss that. And at this point, I don't know if it would have changed my vote. If you remember, I was dissenting vote on implementing the impact fees. I'm very happy to see that that language in there and recognize that I did miss that and misspoke. I should have acknowledged that at the time. So when I'm wrong, I'll admit I'm wrong, and I missed that.
Supervisor Cox, what was that point?
Well, the point that was, impact fees will go through the process with the cities. Each city would implement the fee upon the sign of the MOU. We work with the cities to implement our impact fees, as well as their impact fees.
But the fees are voluntary?
Correct. It would be accepted by and adopted by each city.
And just another point on that subject, I don't believe we implemented impact fees. We implemented the legislative authority to move forward in the process, so just want to be clear about that. Also wanted to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. I hope that everyone has a safe Fourth of July and does recognize, you know, Fourth of July is great for the barbecues and the get-togethers and all the fun, but please do remember to celebrate our country's independence as we come up on that day. And the last thing I wanted to make mention of is, on July seventh, we are going to have the pleasure of honoring at an event that's being put on by this company. Their one-hundred-and-twenty-five-year anniversary in Tulare County and in continuous business operation, that is JD High School of Tulare. So that is two businesses this year that have been honored for over two-hundred-and-fifty years of continued existence and operation in Tulare County. And I think that's something to be really proud of, one being Gift Farms and the other being JD High School. So real excited to do that in a couple weeks, or yeah, next week. But I wanted to make mention of that, because we are not having a meeting to where I can mention it next week.
Sure. Thank you. I want your comments reminded me of something else. This coming Saturday will be the hundredth anniversary for the Armenian church in Yedim. In case you didn't know that, Yedim is an Armenian word, which means Garden of Eden. And when the Armenians first moved into the area, it reminded them somewhat of their homeland in terms of its climate and so forth. And of course, it was a way for them to escape persecution in their native lands. So I'll be able to be able to be there and present a proclamation on behalf of the board to honor them for their hundredth anniversary. They've actually been in the community longer than that, but the particular church, this is the actual founding of their church at that time.
Well, I just, I think Chief Senterlin pretty well filled everybody in on the fire and everything. We are using, through Mr. Pilligard, using Bartlett Park in Porterville as our staging area, and Cal Fire is there, and there is three-hundred-and-fifty people working on that fire. So three helicopters and two air tankers. So hopefully, they're going to get that contained. We do have a front coming in that could whip up some wind and stuff, and let's hope that we don't get that. Of course, if we got some rain, that'd help, but it would hurt some people, too. So, I mean, no matter what you do, you're not going to please everybody out there. And I'm finding out every day in this job. That's all I have this morning. And now, let's move to consent counter. I'll entertain that, and we do have an addendum on there, plus the addendum, items six through twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, if no board members nor any member of the public would like to pull any items, I would move for approval of the consent counter.
Move by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Move on to items not timed. Item twenty-four, question county administrative officer to consider, modify as needed, and approve the response to the Tulare County grand jury, two ten, two eleven interim report. Kristin Bennett?
Good morning. Kristin Bennett, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The twenty-ten-eleven grand jury issued an interim report titled Marijuana Gardens: A Growing Problem. Response from your board is requested, and for your consideration, a proposed response has been provided in your packet. For all reports, respondents must address each finding stating either agreement or disagreement. Response must also address each recommendation stating if it will be implemented or not. The report contains fourteen findings, and the draft response finds agreement with all findings. I believe that there's desire to discuss finding thirteen. In regard to the recommendation section, the proposed draft response needs to be modified as the grand jury issued a revised report that deleted the recommendation section, and the draft also needs to delete the recommendation section, as it's not necessary. It's behalf of you to discuss the findings. I know there was interest in finding thirteen.
Chairman, I raised this issue with staff before the meeting this morning. The term that was used in the finding was that Tulare County receives a negligible amount of money from the federal government to help combat this growing problem. I have no problem with responding that the federal government does not send adequate funds to deal with the problem, because we know that there are, unfortunately, times where we're not able to get to every known grove in the Sequoia, National Forest, or on public lands, rather, because we don't have the funding. My problem is with the term negligible. I remember when I was first on this board, we were receiving a grand total of about forty thousand dollars a year from the federal government. That was the total amount of their subvention to Tulare County to provide this service. Through the efforts of the county, it's been one of our great success stories, actually, of going to Washington, D.C. to seek additional funding and/or additional federal resources to be devoted to this. We have, in fact, increased that sum significantly, almost to the point now I think where we're almost covering our cost for what we're doing. Adequately, it's still not adequate to meet the needs, because we could spend a whole lot more money and a lot more people to deal with the problem, which needs to be done. So I think it would be good to respond in a way that says that we agree in part that the funding is not adequate, but that we have, and to kind of recite the facts of what we have been able to accomplish, because we've come a long ways from where we started. And in addition to that, and that's not really part of this finding, perhaps, but the federal government has also stepped up, not adequately, but with additional people, I believe, from the Department of Interior. We've had those focused opportunities of operations in our county where federal dollars and resources and agencies were directed into our area. So it has been, it is a success story. It's still inadequate in terms of meeting the need. And I think that should be kind of the tenor of our response to this, because the term negligible, in my mind, might be that they sent us ten cents, you know, sort of like our subvention dollars went from thirty, you know, three-point-two million down to a hundred bucks or something like that. And that's not what we're dealing with here. We actually have made great progress.
Supervisor Ashida?
Also, this spring or winter, when the Board of Supervisors went back to Washington, D.C. to lobby for our different issues, we met directly with the head and his assistant with the force service, who was in charge of all law enforcement for the U.S. Force Service. We were successful in receiving a hundred-thousand-dollar, one-time grant to help us with the eradication effort. Probably more significant than that was the commitment they've made for this year is to bring substantial manpower, federal manpower, into our county to help us with this eradication. I've had the privilege of riding on a Blackhawk helicopter, flying into a marijuana plantation for eradication purposes. And those Blackhawk helicopters are not cheap to run or maintain. So they've given us a lot of other resources to use in our campaign against the illegal marijuana. But as Supervisor Worley has pointed out, we've come a long ways, but it still isn't adequate for the needs that we do have. And by looking at the plant numbers we had last year, we have made a dent in some of these cartels, because the plant count is down from where it used to be. So I see our sheriff's department back there. Maybe we didn't get to them all. But we do like to thank the federal government for stepping up and helping us with this issue.
And I do just want to make one point. Supervisor Ashida, I'm glad they've put a big dent in the marijuana that's being grown in the foothills and in the mountains, but that is moving down to the valley floor now. And that is becoming an increasing problem for law enforcement and really for residents of these unincorporated communities, when you have people coming in from Los Angeles or from these other areas and leasing land and giving these residents ungodly amounts of money to utilize their property to grow marijuana. So this is a growing problem. We appreciate the federal government's support. We know that it's generous of them, but it still isn't adequate. We need more funding, more manpower, because this is a real problem, and it's going to continue to foster the issues that we often encounter, like were mentioned in the letter we received about Ivanhoe today, in all of our unincorporated communities throughout our county. So, you know, I wish we could do something about it, but we're very limited.
Just a comment to respond a little bit to that. The thing that, when you look at the federal government, the reason we look to them is that half of Tulare County is owned by the government, most of it by the federal government. Our position is that we want to, our sheriff's position is, he wants to enforce the laws of California across the board, throughout the county. But when you have a landowner that owns half of our county, does not pay property taxes like the rest of everybody else, I mean, we do get some PILT funds and so forth, but really, our funding is wholly inadequate. It is their responsibility to step up on the federal lands. On the valley floor, at least we're dealing with our community. This is our part of the state that is owned privately. And part of the problems that Mr. Vanderpool speaks to is by our own creation. And I don't mean when I say "our," I mean by the state of California, passing initiatives that allow people to raise medicinal marijuana. And we know how that's being used to really create a major, major problem. Nobody needs hundreds of plants for their own personal use, but those are the kind of things that we're dealing with here on the valley floor. It's a different kind of a problem, but certainly, when it comes to federal funding, there is obviously a responsibility of the federal government to deal with on federal lands.
And I don't think it's just an unincorporated area problem either. It's incorporated inside the cities. I get calls every day from people...
Out in the open counties, it's a problem.
...raising marijuana, and I guess the people, they just rested in Exeter, the arithmetic was off there. They only had twice as many plants as they were supposed to have. So sometimes, we catch them on different issues. But, you know, and that's not only the thing, it's the damage they do. It's the environmental impacts. It's the raw sewage, you know, it's pilfering and killing the animals up in the mountains, insecticides, the drip hose they bring in. I mean, the damage they do far exceeds, I think, the marijuana itself is bad, but the damage they're doing to our ecosystem up there is even worse. So I got to hand it to the sheriff's department. You guys are up against a difficult thing and trying to do the best you can with what you got. But my hand goes off to you guys, I'll tell you.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to respond to Supervisor Vanderpool, that this Board of Supervisors put an ordinance in place that marijuana can only be grown for municipal purposes in an industrial zone with four walls and a roof. So all these people that are out there growing marijuana in the open are a violation of our codes, and they are subject to code compliance, which has been very effective. I can say, in my neighborhood, last year, there were many, many outdoor marijuana growers. That number has been curtailed substantially from last year to this year. And there's two reasons for that. One is, we do have something in code compliance that we can go after them for. And the other reason is, they're finally, the growers are learning that they're now targets of other thieves after they've harvested their crop, because the other thieves know that they may have marijuana on hand, and they have cash on hand. And that's where you see a lot of these home invasions. So I think that's another reason why the growing has been curtailed in the rural areas. The problem we have, as Supervisor Worley pointed out, is we have this nebulous state law, which is in conflict with the federal law, that it makes it very difficult for our district attorney to prosecute these people. So that's why we had to go the route of code compliance versus criminal prosecution, is because of how the law's written and how the judges are reviewing, interpreting the state marijuana law. The issue we have with marijuana in state California is not municipal, it is distribution. For the distribution side of it, it's totally out of control, and that's what the state of California never thought about and have yet to address this, causing headaches for every county and every city in this state. So that's my soapbox on marijuana.
Anybody else want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, I want you to approve deleting the response to recommendations one and two, modifying our response to finding thirteen as addressed by the board.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor...
Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Worthley. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Okay, that concludes our Board of Supervisors meeting for today. Do we have need for closed session?
Uh, yes, we do. Items A through E, and there'll be a reporting out with regard to item C only. And the addendum, item E, should've said that there was no announcement of action out expected.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning.
This is Gene Rousseau, reporting out of closed session regarding item C, the consideration of public employee appointment, employment for the position of purchasing agent. On a, on a unanimous vote, five-zero, with Supervisor Worthley with the first motion and Supervisor Vanderpoel with the second motion, the, the board has decided to appoint Lori Looney as a purchasing agent for the county of Tulare.